And we'll get right down to business with HR.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I do have one request today, and that comes from the Coroner's Office. She has a candidate for her open investigator position who has ten years' experience plus master's degree, so she would like to start her at step three.
Out of how many steps?
Seven steps.
Ten years' experience?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think she was informing us.
Uh, no, this would be an approval because it's above a step one. And then the only other item I have is an executive session for performance of a public employee.
You want to do that at the end of this part, or do you want to do that now?
Uh, the end is fine. Either way, it works.
What do we have that we would be holding up if we? I probably prefer to take care of normal stuff.
Um, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Budget. Good morning.
Okay, Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. We have a public hearing next week, October the third, to go over a budget amendment. And so what I'd like to just discuss with you today is I've put together a preliminary of those items that will be on the public hearing. The major one really is there. Most of them are minor. A lot of them have to do with reducing one line and increasing another line, so they offset each other. But there's really only a few that are significant, and one of those is transfer out to the risk management area. And I had discussed this with y'all at a previous workshop that appeared over the course of the last few years. We have not been setting aside enough in the risk management account to account for all of the increases in the risk pool charges. And so that one is a request to amend the budget. And because those, that has to do with previous years and can't affect this current year's billing, I'm asking for a transfer out from the general fund to subsidize the risk management enterprise fund to the tune of eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's something we had previously discussed in a workshop specifically on risk management. So that's basically the most significant item. There was another item, two other items. The coroner had previously, a few weeks ago, requested two positions be added to the budget. And so this amount for about twenty eight thousand dollars reflects that for the remainder of this year. And then also, when reviewing the public attorney prosecuting, it says public, but it should say prosecuting attorneys office department, discovered that extra help budget had not been put in for this year at all. And that was a forty eight thousand dollar item that needs to be amended. So basically, for the general fund, three major adjustments are needed. Then, when we go to other funds, we're setting up a new fund for the sheriff bearcat expense. And so that one has previously been combined with the sheriff's office general fund, and what we're wanting to do is separate that out, so it has its own fund because it involves other entities, as you see, law enforcement for Longview, Kelso, Kalama, Castle Rock, Woodland, which contribute to that. And they have previously committed amounts that need to be brought forward out of the general fund to the tune of about thirty thousand dollars. And then otherwise, the rest of the funds are predominantly in and out. Another major one is tourism, and they would like to request to have some additional grants awarded to the cities for tourism activities. And that would be a hundred and fifty thousand. That's on page three of the amendments. And then also, the risk management would be receiving the transfer in of eight hundred thousand from the general fund. And then industrial accident would like to amend their fund balance. It's basically an in and out, though. So that that total was wrong. I'm going to have to fix that. So that's, that covers the most of the budget amendments. This is a preliminary. I'm still finalizing it. And we'll have it submitted for the agenda item by tomorrow at the deadline. Are there any questions? I know I went over a lot.
Yes, so the eight hundred thousand transfer. I don't remember that from the workshop, and I might have missed it. So sometime, let's get together. You can review what those
Okay.
what those are. That's, that's a big chunk, so.
Yes.
And we'll probably have to be a little bit strategic not to violate any legal restrictions on settlements, I'm assuming.
Could you tell me a little bit more about the tourism grant?
Okay, on the tourism, they, they have there's quite a bit of money that has, they've, we've only been transferring, there's the sale, it's called the, what's sales taxes it called? It's called, I can't remember the title, the sales tax, but half of the sales tax, it's called the lodging sales tax. Half of it goes in straight into the tourism account, and half of it is going currently into the cumulative reserve account. And then from that account, we've been transferring a small annual portion, about sixty thousand dollars out of that, over to tourism to help support tourism activities. A hundred percent of it has to be spent for tourism, either operations, advertising, marketing. It can actually be spent on tourism facilities as well. But we haven't been spending all of the half that's going into the cumulative reserve fund. And so their group, there's an advisory group that looks at their grants applications. And so they were requesting, they, they were requesting if they could have more additional funds to award for the cities versus nonprofit entities to promote tourism.
So this one fifty still comes out of the lodging tax?
Yes, it does. And it's specifically for that purpose, and it would still be used for that purpose, but it would be distributed to the cities.
We're familiar with that. We actually haven't seen it in a while.
No, it hasn't, it hasn't been for a while. I think Joe was the chairman of the Lodging Tax Committee the last time they made a recommendation. But for your information, there are two lodging tax authorizations. One is similar to what cities get and county gets. It's a percentage based on those hotels. But we, years ago, we secured legislation that took the other half from the cities. And part of that deal was that we would then use that money to promote tourism at Mount St. Helens, which had been taken over by the state, and they were dropping that program. They, we said, wait a minute, we still need to have that going on. And I'm assuming a main, major part of the tourism budget is still going to promote Mount St. Helens airline magazines and those kinds of things. But we haven't had a report on that for, for quite a while. So I, I think you might, we probably need to.
I think we use some funds also to support visitors bureaus of the various municipalities.
Right. And, and one of the other, one of the other things that we decided to do is to be very supportive of community celebrations and community activities, festivals and so on. And so, yeah, and we, that's what we haven't been seeing recently. Originally, that sixty thousand dollars amount was called the big idea, and it was a rotating thing. And it got very cumbersome to administer, so we kind of phased that out, but.
So we should expect, this is a real one fifty K that Lodging Tax Advisory, the LTAC wants to wants to deal with, and they must spend it before the end of the year?
They would like to, they would like to.
Oh, they would like to, but they're not really required because there's not much time left.
Right.
Okay.
Right. They would like to. And, and tomorrow, in the work, budget workshop, that we have a time slot for Kimbo Okut to come and speak about those funds that she oversees. And one, and she has this in her presentation as well.
So is it correct for me to interpret the eight hundred and forty six thousand and forty four dollars as subtracting the eight hundred? It's, everything else nets out to a negative forty six thousand and forty four.
I, I need to double check. I'm, I'm still, that's preliminary because I need to make sure my, all my formulas are working right.
Got it.
I didn't have the time this morning to double check that, so.
I think this is.
I think it's a little higher because I've got sixteen, twenty eight, and forty eight. So it should be more like fifty, sixty, should be more like seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
There's a.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. By the way, I find this extremely useful. How about you?
It's helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
Good reminder. And so this is an amendment to this year's budget.
This is amendment to the twenty twenty-three budget.
And it's the next to last one. The next one comes in February.
I hope so.
Well, we always have one in February to balance everything up because bills come in late.
Right. So if looking at history, it looks like you typically have possibly a November amendment and, and a, y'all had a December amendment last year. My goal is to only have one more amendment. And then, yes, there's usually a February amendment as well of the next year.
So the date for the amendment is October three?
Yes, it's next week. And so I, that's why I wanted to just give you a little workshop today on the items that would be included in that public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Well, we may, I've been discussing with the finalist for risk manager. And so I had a discussion this morning, and so I have a few things to work out and wrap up before we finalize that hiring. So, but everything's looking positive, and I'm hoping to have a new person onboard in October.
So we should be hearing something quite specific this week or next week?
Hopefully this week.
Excellent.
Okay.
So, and on risk management, we also have been working with the state auditor on some questions about workers' comp and also questions about, I think it's just the workers' comp right now. So I spent about three hours with them last week, so trying to wrap up everything that they need to finish their audit work.
Okay, thank you. Super.
And we have workshop, budget workshops tomorrow and Wednesday.
That's in the afternoon tomorrow.
Yeah, so those are the workshops for the departments, and all the departmental workshops should be finished by Wednesday. And then after that, the next workshop is on IT requests. There, there are not very many, but there are a few. And then followed with personnel. So those are the next ones up and coming.
Any other questions, Dennis?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Corrections? Marin, are you on Zoom? You're zooming in, is what you mean? In person, yes.
Good morning, Marin Fox, Director of Corrections. The population this morning was two hundred and fifteen. We had thirty-six bookings over the weekend.
Two hundred and fifteen. Fifteen, okay.
We're seeing the population decline a little bit. I'm not entirely sure why, but we were averaging closer to two hundred and fifty for a while. Of the thirty-six, there were nine bookings for DUI, six for drug possession, and eight for shoplifting. Some of those overlap. They could be
Oh.
shoplifting and controlled substance. I don't really have anything else to report unless there are questions.
A question for you. I, I don't know. I, I get the impression that Longview is is putting more people in your facility?
Yes, that's accurate.
And how is it that we go down in number then?
I'd have to look at the trend on bookings. The daily bookings are up, but the releases seem to be matching or outpacing.
Okay.
Which would make sense if Longview's booking, Longview's booking for more misdemeanors, and misdemeanors typically are going to process in and out rather quickly.
All right, and six drug and eight shoplifting, but they're not unique.
Correct, yeah.
It's all a consequence of their changes in how they deal with homeless.
Yes.
Enforcing the law and making sure they don't develop an alternative campground somewhere.
Right, saying, you know, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, you wouldn't see any bookings for unlawful camping or possessing a shopping cart. Those, those type of things were kind of unheard of, and now we're really frequently getting bookings like that.
But, but your comment confuses me. The you didn't mention any illegal camping.
I didn't look. There were some bookings for.
There were some illegal camping bookings. Okay. And generally, they come in and go arraignment, and then they're out on bail?
It's, you know, it's case by case that the judge makes that decision. Some people are released on misdemeanors. Pretty frequently, they're released PR, personal recognizance, and given a court date. They can, sorry.
So the only time they're really in jail for more than a day is going to be on the weekends?
Perhaps, or, or if they're seeing, what I'm seeing with the judge is that if they're being booked repeatedly, they'll set a bail amount on the misdemeanors.
Okay.
As well.
This two hundred and fifteen is a number as of eight AM today or something?
Yes, around that, yes.
Okay, so that probably throughout the day is the courtmates probably will go down?
Yes, it will absolutely go down.
Okay.
I'll look at it. Maybe I'll shoot you an email later and tell you what the count is at the end of the day, but it'll, it'll be lower.
Any other issues that?
We're still plugging away hiring. We have a number of positions open. We did start an employee who was from Larch Mountain from the layoffs there. We have another one in process from Larch, so we're, we're, we're trying.
Okay, so you're, you're not fully staffed. You haven't been for a while, right?
Correct.
How short are you now?
I believe we're five positions down. Yes, five.
Does that translate into overtime?
Yes. Yes.
Is that unhappy overtime or happy overtime? In the sense that some people like the overtime pay and are, are quick to volunteer, and then other ones are like, look, I got a family.
Right, a mix.
Okay, so it isn't all bad.
Right. We, sometimes we have forced overtime, but
Okay, thank you.
it isn't all forced overtime.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Hort, IT Director. I wanted to give an update on the phone project. We are still following our timeline. This morning, Jake Fleishman was able to run the Avaya and Cisco system in parallel over at the Hall of Justice, and so that means that.
Could you repeat that more slowly?
Sure. Jake Fleishman was successful at deploying our Avaya and Cisco parallel. So it's kind of a, a phase as we roll out the new Cisco phones.
Is that for, for a, just a, just a pilot group?
Right now, that's the Hall of Justice trunk, and then they're going to be working on the admin building trunk, and we.
So if I would go to the PA's office, I'd see two phones?
No, this is on the back end where, on the back end, we're using the hardware, I believe, for the Cisco product to do inbound and outbound.
Okay, so we're not doing simultaneous phone call systems at the moment?
No, this is kind of like on the back end, but this is a significant milestone for us. We attempted to do it on Friday. There were some technical difficulties, and then this morning Jake was able to work with our vendor and get things ironed out. And we're looking at deploying the phones in four waves, and we're looking to start with the administration building mid-October.
No change in phone numbers? Yay.
This is later than you had expected, isn't it?
Yes, but it works out with our Avaya licensing for running parallel. Everything is in contract support, so. But it is later than originally.
Right, so you won't have to come back to us and say, we need to extend the Avaya, which would be the, kind of the milestone that you're trying to avoid.
Correct.
Okay. And so when you say mid-October, you're talking about at that timeframe, everybody's office will have a new phone?
In ways, yes. So we're doing like the administration building first in the first wave, plus a couple of other departments that have requested to go first. And so I believe it's admin building plus the sheriff's office. And then there's kind of the peripheral campuses, and then.
But you're beginning real deployment in mid-October. You won't be done till mid-November?
Technically, on decommissioning the Avaya system, that will be more towards mid-November, but we will be on the Cisco platform, hopefully by the end of October.
Okay, thank you. More questions?
No.
Dennis? I, I saw an email where you, you, your department was able to do an IPv6. Will you tell us?
Yes, that was actually my next bullet point. A shout out to Lance Hollinsworth. He successfully went on a test network IPv6, which is a sixty-four bit IP address, so it allows us to have more addresses and more direct connections. It's faster than IPv4, which is what most entities are on, so it was a significant milestone as well.
Yeah, it may seem like a trivial thing, but IPv6 has been in the specs for ten, fifteen years. And it's not, it's one of those things. You don't switch the phone system overnight. You don't switch from a, a mapping strategy that's for IPv4 to IPv6 without tremendous amount of background work. And because it's an internet addressing, it does affect everything in the world.
So Lance was pretty excited and did a shout out to the team and included Art on that, so. And the other thing that we're deploying effective October first is cybersecurity training for new hires. So kind of similar to the NeoGov platform, we will also send out IT cybersecurity training in a digital platform. In the past, it used to be an informal conversation with new hires and providing paper templates, but this is completely automated and digital training.
Can you help me understand that a little bit more? What actually happens on October first?
That's when we're deploying it for new hires. So after the first, when new employees are brought into the county, we are going to do cybersecurity training for them.
Oh, training. That's the word I couldn't hear. Okay, sorry.
And we are finalizing the team's rollout. We have motivation to not renew our go-to-meeting platform, which is about ten thousand dollars a year. So that would be a cost savings of just using the teams. Aaron Briggs is finalizing team channels and working with departments to get that set up, so.
What's the future of Zoom?
Several departments, specifically the courts, have a preference to Zoom. And so my standing would be is that the county under our Office 365 licensing will provide teams. And if departments wish to continue their subscription with Zoom, they can. It's more of a preference.
Okay, so we will, we will handle both Zoom and Teams. I, I know I've had to do some Teams meetings for agencies outside, and my machine wasn't a happy camper. I, I don't know what that was about, but it, there are some training issues, I suspect.
Yes, and I think it's also comfort. A lot of what people use during the pandemic. Yes, and I think it's also comfort. A lot of what people use during the pandemic, you know, there's more comfort into what they know. And so there's other platforms like go-to-meeting and WebEx. We're just trying to negate having twenty different meeting platforms and just go with Teams or Zoom. And right now I am working on the CEGIS audit, so this happens every three years where um, departments that handle criminal justice information have a technical and business audit. So we're working with departments to go through the questionnaire and get ready for our audit in November. And that's with the Washington State Patrol. Do you have anything for me?
Are you good?
I'm good.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have hit the miscellaneous point on the schedule here. Let me see, I should have asked whether there were citizen comments. I don't see any hands being raised. Let's go ahead and have that executive session then. How much time do you need? Fifteen minutes for performance of a public employee? Qualifications of an applicant. So what's the proper language to go into executive session? Recess?
Yes, we recess this meeting to go into an executive session.
So we will recess this meeting now to go into executive session for fifteen minutes. For qualifications of a prospective employee.
Do our legal beagles join us?
Yeah.
The board is extending the executive session an additional five minutes until ten fifty AM.
No.
Hello, we're back from an executive session as is required. No, no decisions were made. The discussions were made.
Hello again, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I would like to request from the Office of Public Defense that new employee start at step four of the deputy or of the public defense attorney level, so not the senior level.
I move a rule.
We have a motion on the floor to approve a step four for the Office of Public Defense. Any further discussion? I don't see any hands up any place. Let's vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, the motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So we have. Anyone has a public comment? This is an opportunity to do so. Seeing none. We close this meeting and start the 11 o'clock meeting at 11 o'clock.
So anyone who's building a home and wants to put in, you know, natural gas furnace or fireplace or stoves. March, they've got an extension to get it purchased.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we hope we'll be very busy between now and next March.
Yeah.
So, good news, I guess.
That's great news. So tomorrow you have a call for hearing on your, to set the date for September 17th. And if it's okay, I'm going to ask that maybe we set it for mid-March.
Yeah.
And then that way then the call for hearing is done and we can just bring back the, and workshop it, of course, with our board, but workshop it then into the next year when we know a better date. If that works. Okay, we'll plan on that.
Does that also include additional requirements to address wild, urban wildfire interface?
The code had, I mean, the state had adopted the wildland urban face code statewide, but the watch state building code in its entirety is stalled now until then, so.
I'm just trying to anticipate the changes for.
Well, the changes in our jurisdiction will be very minimal because insofar as we've been using it now for several years.
And we have quite a few options for.
Yes.
For owners to pick and choose how to protect their, their property from.
Yeah, those were, what you're speaking of is a matter of accomplishing fire flow. The water protection, water supply out of appendix B of the fire code. So the adoption for the wildland urban face code as adopt by state would be mostly administrative at this point because we've been implementing the tools.
Yeah. Okay. Cool.
I didn't want the board to think that we weren't budget excited. And so I didn't want to skip a budget workshop because I know departments have been presenting. We really don't have anything to present. We meet with you weekly. And we're really trying to make shift with and make do with what we have. We've reduced staff and filled as needed and eliminated those positions. And I just, I brought our budget boss stuff that I had submitted to Kathy's office, but our stuff is a little bit less than what it was last year or what was requested. And that's just, I mean, status quo. I think we've increased gas like $1,200. I mean, it's very, very, very minimal stuff. Like I said, we're trying to live within our means and we have a budget request through the personnel workshops. And that's just to change the funding of a position, not take it out of our position and into other funds. But besides that, we really don't have, we've. We didn't fill an associate planner this last year. We underfilled the senior planner with an assistant planner position, so we saved budgetary capacity there. We are contracting with the lower Columbia Conservation District, passed through money from the state grant for VSP. We eliminated the operations manager position and then the halftime GIS position that we shared with Public Works when Public Works filled their, took, stole our wonderful employee. We didn't fill the halftime position. Jim is, between Jim and then if we need Lorraine to, we are making do with what we have. So we're not asking for anything additional. I, and I have the org chart of what 2020, 2024 will look like in the back. But I just wanted, I, we have all our funds there so you can see them. I just didn't want you to think we forgot budget, but I know it's very important. But we are pretty much status quo across the board.
You did all this while enhancing the performance of the department.
We're trying.
Well, we, we get the grunt of all the complaints and it's a step function improvement. So, so we thank, I thank you.
Well, it's, it's a team approach, let me tell you. And every day it's a team approach because.
It actually is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So that's all we had. I just wanted.
Questions?
Anything for the board for me or Mike?
It, it looks like you're still below expenditures from what's budgeted for this year after six months.
We are, but.
And, and the new figures kind of reflect that.
They do.
Those changes that you've made.
And any additional personnel changes that the board does during the personnel workshop will make, will come off of those expenditures as well. So those are not out of there yet. They're still included.
Oh, you still have personnel requests?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yep, not, not adding any reduction to my department. So, yep.
So let me take this moment to ask a few questions. Mostly update, how's the VSP changeover going?
It's going very, very well, very smoothly. We just got an increase in our contract that I will be bringing back at the end of this month. They gave us an extra eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to fund one of the homeowners projects that had started prior to us going to the Conservation District. So they took over the reins and they're running with it.
Could you repeat the project?
It's a homeowner has land, a lot of land, and she's separating the critical areas and fencing it off to protect the, the critical area on her property and working with the Conservation District to do that.
Okay, and the other, another question slightly different vein is we've been worried about GIS expertise. We have good expertise in-house. We're looking the downstream a little bit. Is that a hot issue still?
It's, it, I don't know that hot issue, but very important to all of our departments that it affects. We need to start backfilling for.
Who's taking the lead on that?
I believe IT is.
Okay.
We are partnering though with the Assessor's Office, Public Works, and my, I mean, our department, all, it, it's, it's gonna take a village to make it happen. It'd be great if it was centralized.
Okay, and then I haven't heard anything negative about Xcela or you're, you're, you're switching over from the old system. Are, are you all switched over?
We are completely switched over. Everything is out of permit queue and into Xcela about two weeks ago. Everything got converted over. We still have a few skid bumps along the way, but we're working with a third-party vendor to work out some different workflows that are working better for our planning division and then some couple, I guess, forms or finalized, like occupancy, the form and stuff that kind of gets generated. We're working with the, that group to, for a deliverable. But it's, I mean, if we ask, they're very workable and, you know, it's just a process to spend time, you know, you have to, you ask for things and then they build it, and then you have to amount for time to, to test and trial run, so, and test it internally before we unleash it. We are completely only in Xcela right now. We've moved everything over. It's fantastic.
Dennis, any questions?
Yes, can you give us a little bit of an update on where we are with negotiations with the City of Woodland, with the Woodland Bottoms?
Ever, I haven't heard from the City of Woodland since our joint, we had one joint meeting. We had a lot of participants online. A few of us were in person, and it's just kind of stalled right now. City of Woodland has their comp plan that has kind of risen to the forefront, and so that's kind of taken a lot of their time. We're, have a meeting in the middle of October with the Dyking District down there to work about a drainage, work on a drainage plan that we're gonna be a team player and a partner in, but we're more than willing to come to the table and discuss or do anything we need to do to make, you know, the collaboration happen, but we're just kind of letting Woodland take the lead on that since it was, you know, their project and we're, like I said, we're more than willing to come to the table, but.
And, and I know the, the port is continuing to have plans for your development in the bottoms.
They do.
Is there, is that kind of sitting in the back?
It's in the, it's, it's slowly rising. They have big ideas and big project ideas, but.
What is they?
Port of Woodland.
The port?
The port, yes.
I, I, it, it seems like it, it might be useful if we began referring to the Woodland bypass to, to address that concept of a, a new bridge across the Lewis, getting into, getting into the, the Woodland Bottoms area. The state doesn't seem to be moving forward at all on any kind of solution to.
Yeah, I didn't even.
Twenty-one, so it's like, okay, then let's look at a whole new approach, and that's tying in with the Illinois in interchange.
And I would refer though, that, all that to Susan and.
Yeah, that would be, that would be outside of your.
Yes, yes. But we are, the Port of Woodland has a lot of big-ticket items coming forward that there were slowly, it's very much in preliminary stages, but the infrastructure does need to be in place for them to carry out their, what they want to do, so.
Are you at all following the developments on the former Reynolds site where they've pretty much taken down all the buildings?
They've taken down the buildings, but I've not heard what their plans are to do. Nothing's come forward that I know of. It's, yeah, we've been out of that loop. We've not been included in any discussions if there is anything proposed at this point.
And, and then the, the last question really deals with the water quality or the, the water issue in the Lewis River.
We had that. Goira twenty seven.
Kind of battle and, and that, yeah.
And Department of Ecology hasn't acted or done anything since, so we are, we still have our consultant in place for when that happens.
We're keeping our powder dry, so to speak.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Everything's kind of stalled on that end, which is fine.
And speaking of stalling, have you, have you noticed that construction has kind of slowed down? Although it's, that, that construction season is gonna cause problems as the weather will, will slow.
There's, everyone is still excited to continue to build. Most people are doing alterations to their current existing homes, and I think that's because the interest rates are high. We still have a ton of single-family dwellings as well as ADUs. ADUs are kind of the new, you know.
Being discovered.
Rediscovered and, and, yeah, absolutely. We did start separating those on our monthly report, so the board can see, just, I mean, there is quite a number, and we get, we probably get oh, four to six staff consults, which are the free, we sit down with applicant and just, they have a proposal, we probably, I would say four to six, maybe three to five, I don't know. A week that we're still doing, that people are still interested in doing stuff with their properties, so it's more of what, what can they do with their property that they currently have instead of doing something different. But, yeah, the numbers haven't really decreased yet. I think this rain may stall some stuff, but we'll see.
My, my last question is whether or not you know if there are any additional construction or development projects up at Toodle Park, near the new, the new truck stop, gas station.
Um, the Space Saver?
Yeah, right.
They added some fuel tanks recently.
No, no other shops going in up there that are stores?
There's, we have a proposal from, Burma. Uh, we have a pretty decent commercial-sized, it's like storage building. I think there's gonna be an office building from Warehouser that's being proposed upon Burma, but that is just in very preliminary stages and that just, they just came in for their.
That's kind of just, just to the north.
Just to the northeast of.
They've got some kind of a building up there.
Yeah.
But.
And so they're looking to see what all they can do, and I know that's in the works. It's, they've got drawings, the preliminary drawings drawn, so.
So I noticed the paper discovered the, the proposal to clamp down on any developments along the Green River. Fairly, fairly draconian effort, and most of the Green River watershed is privately owned. Any, any contact with Warehouser in terms of what's gonna happen? I mean, from my preliminary reading that I've heard is no development, I mean, period, no, no bridges, no, nothing, nothing to, to provide access.
I heard scuttle on that, but I've, they've not come out and contacted me myself, but I'm, I don't know if they've contacted Wayne. I haven't heard from him on that piece.
It, it is a little, it is a little irritating and concerning. This is a river that is fairly remote, and there's not much development, but it is, is mostly commercial logging. It's, it's source is in Skamania County and it flows back and forth between Lewis County and Callis County, a significant change in terms of what, what is allowed, and absolutely no discussion from Ecology with any of the counties. I was at county meetings, talked to Commissioners last weekend. They, nobody's heard anything, and it's, it's pretty, pretty disconcerting that Ecology doesn't seem to think counties count.
And they are trying to change the setback, or they are changing the setback regulations too, what you can build within the shoreline, so. But no, no communication, like formal communication at least to us.
We used to have quarterly meetings with the Southwest Washington Director for, for Ecology. And, you know, I, I kind of wonder if that, we should be a little bit more proactive. If they're not gonna come to us, maybe we should set up a system where they need to be held accountable in terms of what's going on. It's. That was with Sally Totoff, and then she retired, and then we've never gone back.
Rich Denji, or is it, we met with him the last time, and that was.
Been a while.
Over a year ago. Yeah, I, I smirk a little bit because those meetings can be very frustrating.
It is the Department of Ecology.
Yeah.
Difficult is their middle name. That's good, I'm good.
I have a couple more questions, so put that green light back on.
It's back on.
Yeah, but you were gonna turn it off.
No, I'm okay.
I'm a little confused as to your, like, I know the Port of Woodland is trying to look at Austin Point and the trailer park there. What part do we have, if any, to play in that?
Not many, not much of any. It would be there, it would be whether the board wanted to support that or not, and then.
But in terms of if they wanted to put up a building there, they would get permit from us or from Woodland?
From us.
Okay.
It's in the county.
So the, the port property is considered county property?
It is county property, yes, and everything that they're doing in the Woodland Bottoms would be county permitting and county property, yes.
County jurisdiction. It's not our property.
No.
It's county jurisdiction.
For permitting, yes.
And I didn't write a note about my other question, so you're off the hook.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the org chart. Tracy? Thanks for the org chart. Nope, that's fine.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mike Moss, Public Services Director. The first time we have today at our facilities, maintenance is the Hall of Justice and Health Department paving project. It's on the motion agenda for tomorrow. We had three bidders come in. This is for grinding and paving the south and east parking lot of HOJ and the full parking lot at the Health and Human Services Building. Lakeside Industries was the lowest bidder at four eighty-six, that's four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, and we had two hundred bidders one all the way up to nine ninety-three, so you're almost half price compared to somebody else out there, but it's a project that we've been looking at for a few years now. We're gonna slope it, so hopefully we have no ponding and the drains work well at, especially at Hall of Justice. It's also re-stripe and recurve, curb stops in at both locations, so.
And the trees in the middle of the parking lot are gonna be taken out?
Yeah, actually that happened this last weekend. Hopefully finish the project off today or tomorrow with a new day. They were in over the weekend cutting, since there's less traffic on that road out in front. They have a couple of trees left to trim, but they removed a few trees in the north and a few in the islands. The rest of the trees, they just were trimming up the healthy trees at that location. Today and tomorrow, they have one or two trees left to trim, and then they're going to then stump, grind the last, the trees they did take out, so.
Have you heard at all what's going on with the, the building to the south of the Hall of Justice? Restaurant slash exercise center slash.
We know it's Charlie's, but I've not heard any, I heard at one point, but I all did probably a couple of years ago about a casino trying to go back in a place there, but I guess there were some issues of permitting or at that location, so I have no idea.
They hadn't paid all the taxes. That was back when I was.
Yeah.
So if I could interrupt you on that one, when you say paving the parking lot, you, you go all the way to the end south of Charlie's?
Actually, no, they, close. There's two parking lots in the south. We're doing both of those, and there's one additional parking lot in front of Charlie's. That's private property, so we're going as far south as we, the county owns on, and on that side.
And that's what I'm trying to find out. There is one, one driveway near the building that goes out. There's another driveway partway down.
Yep.
Then there's another driveway.
Yeah.
And you're doing everything between those.
Everything north of the third, the third one south, north of there, everything to the building we're doing.
Right, yes. Yeah, I apologize. And with the grinding, they, are they reusing asphalt when they grind it, or are they hauling it off?
I think they're hauling it off. A lot of times they reuse it or take it somewhere else if somebody wants that, so. We have, once we have a signed contract, we'll get dates in place. Tomorrow's a contract awardment and execution. Usually those, do those in back-to-back weeks, but with the weather turning and new days of skinning the trees done this week, we'd like to do both tomorrow. That way we can get a lakeside schedule before the weather turns colder and be able to pave in the next couple of weeks. We'll work with HOJ and HHS about their scheduling at those locations. Might be them after night, evening or weekend work. We don't know for sure, working with Lakeside, how we're gonna schedule around their courts.
Right now, the parking spaces there are fairly nice ample.
They are, why, yeah, with wise.
And you're gonna maintain that?
That's the hope, yes, yeah. We don't need, because I don't think we need additional parking, so we don't need to squeeze it together. I agree, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And we're also gonna re-stripe the north lot additionally at the same time, since the north lot of the HOJ is kind of, you can't really see the parking spots there.
That's the employees' lot.
Employees' lot, and that's on the agenda for hopefully next or on the schedule for phase two for next summer, to get the north parking lot done. But we've, we, way it worked out calendar-wise and what we're warning against timeframe-wise, we, we decided, and budget-wise, we decided to hold that off till twenty twenty-four.
Well, we, we still have some sunny days ahead. We always have that Indian summer a little bit later in October, but.
That's the hope.
Yeah.
The north parking lot always seemed to me to be a little bit squeezed.
I agree, yeah.
Is there a reason we wouldn't re-strike that with a little more?
We could, yeah.
Because there, there seems to be plenty of parking all around there.
There, there is. That's why, that's, that's why I think we can keep them nice with parking spots because of that reason. Like I said, we're not crunched for spots or we're not, especially on that south parking lot, there's tons of spaces on the south end.
Well, and of course, the junker ponds, you know, keeps pretty, pretty empty.
Yeah, our hope is to, once, next week or two, once we start working with Lakeside, we'll go through the storm drains ourselves and start with our vac truck, clean those out while we're doing that project. We visit with our operations manager this last week about Ivy, and so we're trying to get a game plan since we now have the trees trimmed. Well, if we're gonna look at parking lot, what we're gonna do with Ivy around the HOJ and the north parking lot. Chances are we're gonna remove that probably with Public Works crews.
That's a big effort.
They'll get reimbursed, Susan.
With, with the jail crew, the jail work crew?
No, probably with our crew. It's gonna be more heavy, equipment-wise. Skid steers and our mini excavators start digging around, get rid of that, especially since the work we've done there. It makes sense, the Ivies, so. I'm actually looking at the Ivy on the park or south of here between us and.
The one that's covering, the one that's covering the signs?
Yeah, the first couple thirty-minute parking sites are now covered up, so, yeah, we've gotta get that off.
So are those projects that Will will be overseeing? I mean, or is somebody else the project manager for the paving?
For the paving one, we, we did a lot of it through Public Works since we're used to that and our crews are used to that, so we had our operations manager and also our local road supervisor help with the, that project.
Okay.
The Ivy and stuff, if it's Public Works crews, we'll probably oversee that with facilities. Facility's been working a lot with the scheduling side of it with the court system, but we've been doing a lot with the Lakeside since we deal a lot with them or whatever contractor we use, yeah.
Good.
So you'll see, like I said, both the contract awardment and execution tomorrow, so if we approve both, that way we're gonna move along with Lakeside scheduling. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Yeah. All right. We have Susan come up with some public works items. First with the Cathlament Road Slide Repair Contract. I believe she talked to you guys about this on the agenda on September fifth. Tomorrow is the awardment of that on the consent agenda, but just give you a, just a quick overview again, history on that in case there's any questions.
It seems like this is about the fourth touch.
It's just the fourth touch and you, if everything goes right, we won't see it again until we're doing the closeout. So that, that's always my hope. So we have the execution to underground, excuse me, Midway Underground LLC for, why didn't I bring my glasses? Four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Doesn't get any better.
I know. It's not to execute the contract. It is below the engineer's estimate. This is a reimbursable from Wash Dot. So it's a eighty-six and a half percent reimbursable project. They had all their paperwork in order. We did have to disallow one of our contractors for not having their paperwork in order, but they were the second bidder. So that was a little bit of quick slowdown on that.
So mid-country?
Midway Underground LLC.
That's the new, I don't recognize that name. Is that from around here?
Recognize it either. Here, do you have your glasses?
Toledo.
Toledo. Oh, well, that's local, pretty much. Okay.
So we're hoping to get that up and rolling as fast as we can to try and get that fixed before this weather gets any worse. And the other two items I have on there are to the, two additional appraisals and acquisitions, ones for appraisal, ones for acquisition. It's the same company, which makes it a little confusing for people.
This is the dragage project?
No, this is just the whole normal.
I know.
So.
He may be back for that. Because we should be using the assessor's office.
Yes, we, we should be using the assessors, assessor's office.
If only they would just sell for what the assessor says the property is.
Yeah. If they'd settle for what the appraisals tell them, the appraisers tell them, that'd be nice too.
Yeah. The next one is good news?
I believe it's good news. Sue, Savannah's been working on this agreement with Legal and Jail. So maybe she'll give you an update on the space lease agreement over.
Did we have Epic Land Solutions? Oh, I thought you did Midway. I'm sorry.
I did Midway. Epic is the appraisals and the acquisitions. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah. So I have an update for the board. Quite a while ago, I came to you regarding the Community Integrated Health Systems Lease Agreement at, what do we call it? Gosh, it slipped my mind. What's the building called? Courthouse Square. Anyway, I just.
I thought it was in the jail.
No, it's next to the jail. So that.
Did they want space in the jail with Marin or is it all at Courthouse Square?
It's still at Courthouse Square. Yeah. So the location was not changed. And we just wanted to enter into a lease agreement with them to make sure we had documented terms. So I have received that back and what they decided to do was do that shared lease option. So they have no rights to the office. It is truly a shared use and they cannot have any fixtures there of their own. So I'm going to try to put that on the agenda for next Tuesday. So you'll see that come through. There is no dollars exchanged. It's just truly an agreement.
Next week's.
I'm trying. Yeah, I'm going to, that's my intent. So, so I have that. There's any questions on that?
And that'll appear, I didn't quite catch it. That'll appear not tomorrow, but.
Correct. A week from, a week from tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yep. Just want to give you a heads up. Yeah. And then I had a couple miscellaneous. I just wanted to run by the board. One of the, the, gosh, I was drinking coffee back there. One of them is the affordable housing discussion that we had last Wednesday and the board had asked that we get on the agenda for another meeting for a follow-up. So I was able to get on the agenda for Tuesday, October tenth. So that's where we be, we'll be doing a follow-up presentation regarding any questions the board may have for the affordable housing discussion. We should also have Gina here and Legal. So.
Yeah. Did you, did you see David's email?
Yep. Yes. Yeah. So I think we'll have some good news as far as options go and, and looking to put it out there to other, potentially other agencies as well.
So that was moving forward with Habitat?
Right. That would be Habitat.
Yeah. And nothing with Community House?
I don't think it's exclusive. I mean, I, I don't think they're including each other.
Correct.
I'm thinking though, there's certainly the discussion would be summarizes. Any funding is in discussion for any of those.
Right. It's not exclusive. It's just, so I've been trying to make sure I call it affordable housing or, or you know, something along those lines, not exclusive to Habitat necessarily. But I think what David was proposing, we'll probably have more information on that 10th meeting, but what I think is going to happen is looking at different counties and using maybe a template of an RFP to put out there and saying, hey, you know, give us proposals and we'll consider them and then go from there. That's what I think is going to be the direction.
And a couple of weeks ago now or a week ago, I was introduced to an organization that I haven't quite figured out too well. But Gina is on top of that and that's possible. What they do is they've figured out some way that they operate a sawmill. They get materials and with volunteer labor and if you volunteer, you can get a house build kit from them at the end of their program. So and I think that includes plans and all that. So I, I, like I said, I, I'm not sure, but the idea is people put sweat equity in Habitat. People put sweat equity into this one also. And I think that's, that's a really good thing.
So the Community Action Council has for years had self-help housing programs, very similar that basically created neighborhoods where the, the neighbors would build each other's homes.
Cap.
Cap. And so they've got three or four, the last, last one was up in Castle Rock. And, and over the years, I've always been very supportive of those, but they've gone away from that because of the complexity of getting permits for subdivisions. And that, that subdivision process is just made it so that it doesn't pencil out. And so they now, I, the, the projects we've done has, has been sort of, here are a bunch of homes that qualify for certain projects if they get rehabilitated, but it's not neighborhood and it's not necessarily sweat equity. So it's, you know, it's.
Interesting. I wonder why they slowed down.
Doesn't involve that sweat equity, but so I'm, I'm convinced that's, that's really the way to, to help low income families. It's just that people with disabilities end up not being able to get the assistance because, you know, disabilities make it difficult for them to, to do the sweat equity. So.
And I know that Habitat mentioned one of their programs, similar to the rehabilitation piece, which is a brush with kindness. And if people are unable to provide the sweat equity, the physical hours, they provide alternative, which they had mentioned a few last week, solutions to getting those sweat equity hours. Yeah. So anyway, they'll have more information in a couple of weeks. If you guys have anything in the meantime, and I can run it by them. If you guys have any other questions in the meantime, I can run it by Habitat as well.
Great. Okay.
And then I just had one other miscellaneous item and it's also just an update. Quite a while ago, Public Works went out for an RFP for an accounting software solution. We received two bid awards back and I plan on presenting those next Monday for a Tuesday bid award. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that that's coming and I want to.
This is for what again?
An accounting software solution for Public Works. So quite a while ago, I came and presented to the board and let you guys know that we were finally going out for a request for proposals. So we did and we received those back and now we're moving forward in the award process.
So this is new computer programs?
So it's specific to only accounting and finance. So it's not taking the place of PeopleSoft. It would be an integration to PeopleSoft to provide accounting services for Public Works.
Yes, that's your department. Well, I, I was thinking, we've talked a little bit about that and
it's unfortunate. We probably have to go that way, but it sounds like you're convinced you have to go that way. And the only thing I would ask is that we make sure that we get a nice spirited discussion with Kathy and Carolyn, the auditor and, and us, just so that we know that we've turned over every stone because buying new software is always.
I understand. This has been a project I've been working on since I came over to Public Works. It's been quite a while. The board at the time had directed us to really take a deep dive into what was going on in accounting, if you recall. And so that's where we started. And this is where we've, you know, six or seven years later, you know, figured this is where we need to be. I, what I wanted to do is today, just kind of give you guys a little information that I'll be coming Monday. I wanted to provide you guys and I'll email it. So just some information, some high level bullet points. You know, unfortunately we've had a lot of turnover in the county over the last seven years. So those who have been involved in this process are no longer here. And that was the case in the auditor's office. I was working with Brooke. And she was in on the calls and the meetings, but unfortunately Brooke, Brooke left. And so that, that information wasn't necessarily translated to others. So anyway, we've been working on this for quite a while and I do provide, I do plan on providing you guys some information this week to kind of mull over and go over questions and then present more on Monday.
Yeah, I shouldn't have, I should not have excluded IT on that list.
They've been involved as well.
Yeah, I, you know, we, we supposedly spent, well, we've spent a fortune on PeopleSoft and we, it, it always bothered me because we're county, like many other counties and why we have to have our unique approach is, is a bit strange. So I, I'm hoping we can not only decide this is what we have to do today, but what our marching plans might be for, for the next five years because software stuff, do you really want to plan it ahead? Because they have to play with each other in some form.
It is easy to forget that the turnover, if we go back to look at who advocated for PeopleSoft, they're all gone. They're not here. They're not, except perhaps Carolyn. But yeah, things have really, really have changed.
Yeah, the, and I, I don't know if Carolyn would agree, but very often it's like in, in software circles of vapor ware is the typical thing. You, you bring in a vendor and they're going to tell you all about what it could be, but it never is. And
I think we face that with PeopleSoft, right?
Yeah. If you're not careful, you get sucked into it and it's, it's only natural that you would be, they're trying to sell you. I mean, they're used car salesmen.
Well, and you want it to work so bad, right? For the first two years, we worked with PeopleSoft, trying to get some of these modules that were sold to the county for Public Works specifically for project costing. And we just exhausted those avenues. Not to keep you guys too long, but we did go out to bid a couple of years ago for vendors to actually see if they could integrate what we needed with PeopleSoft. So we could use PeopleSoft, how it was intended to use. And it was quite a while ago, but I think we had bids of three hundred thousand plus upwards of four seventy, just to integrate these modules. And we're like, well, we can't do that. So that's when we kind of went back to square one and started researching some alternatives that were lower cost, but would work for us.
When, when you get people that you, you're going to issue a contract to build a bridge or replace a road in some way, how do they give you that other project? Is it something you need to be able to put into a machine and look at?
As far as reviewing some of the help.
And for managing it also in the sense that, I mean, ideally the developer, the contractor will allow you access to what's going on and, and also because you are experts in lots of construction, you would want to be able to see that in fact, they've done due diligence. So you don't end up halfway through the contract and find out that they overlooked something that they claimed they had, but they.
So maybe even like a project management aspect. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah.
So that is something that we really, just being transparent, we really don't have in the county for software solution, IT integration. I think that isn't, you know, is a potential need that would help divisions kind of get these software systems going and managed correctly because you know, I, I don't hide the fact that I am not an IT guru. I know what we need at Public Works. I've been there. I looked into it. I know how to, we need to fulfill those needs and from an IT perspective, you know, but I, I'm not a great IT project manager to facilitate everything. So that has been a need, you know, and I think that's countywide, you know, with Acela, we went through the Acela transition. I know when the auditor and treasurer went through, or excuse me, treasurer and assessor went through their integration when they got rid of Tim's, you know, I think that'd be helpful, but it's an as needed thing, you know, it's just when we get new, then we, then we need it. So you know, that, that is definitely a, could be a struggle. I don't know if I answered your question or gave a good answer, but it's the truth.
Well, it's, it's down a little bit in the weeds right now.
Sorry.
Well, as long as you don't have anything to interfere with Sean taking care of business, right?
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. So I'll see you guys next week. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
You're not going to say a few things, Mike?
Well, I think, well, I'll go back to what she talked about real quickly. I appreciate that. When we walked into, to Public Works, it was six, six years ago in October. And we had a lot of the, the financial management and some of the issues we walked into were true headaches, as you may recall. Some transparency and some of the communication from that office was challenging, especially during budget times.
Well, well, I remember it was very transparent, but only to the person who developed the system.
Correct. Savannah inherited that and it was really a lot of, I don't know what the right word for the worksheets, the data programming that was built by individuals with no backup support. And lots of errors and lots of chance, chances for errors. And unfortunately it's been six years now, but it's been a process, process for Savannah for the last couple, really diving into it, seeing what other counties do, how it relates to crab reporting at the state level, how we can get that information from one to the other and also integrate PeopleSoft at the same time. So it's, it's challenging for our team to get to this point. Price tag, is it cheap? No. But is it something we need to be at? Yeah.
Excuse you, Mike.
Compared to PeopleSoft, really cheap compared to PeopleSoft, I think.
It is really cheap compared to.
I may have misunderstood, but did you say crap reporting?
That's what we call them in-house.
Pretty important. A lot of, a lot of the counties in the state uses exactly the same system that we ended up.
Yeah.
Finalizing.
All but.
That's important.
Yes. I think all but six use this program that we're looking to utilize. And, and I actually, when we first started this, I could, I don't want to take too much time, but I actually solicited them, you know, they weren't out on the street trying to, you know, garner our business and do a sales job. I reached out to them and said, hey, you know, give me some of the background of your, of your company. I mean, who do you serve? Who works with PeopleSoft? And so we, we did all that. We've reached out to other counties who integrate with PeopleSoft, who use this program. And they actually are by far the cheapest out of any bids we have received. I think because they're so specialized for Washington that they've really kind of cornered the market here with our reporting requirements. So.
Super.
I'm sure that curiosity, are they Microsoft based or Linux based?
That's a great question. I don't know.
It's a silly question at this point.
I don't know.
The good thing, it's a silly question.
Hopefully it's Linux because that adapts to everybody's different way of thinking, right?
Crab. Yeah. Crab reporting.
County Road Administration Board.
That's all we have today.
Well, any questions, Dennis?
No.
Thank you. I, at this point, we can see if there's any question from the public. Although we do have. Although we do have, uh, no comments from, from purchasing or parks.
No, actually, we're still, Park's been involved, of course, with the, uh, Trap Range project up there. Uh, they did a few more pours last weekend. They're hoping to finish that project up from the trap houses and the trap pads. And they say this week, but we'll, we'll see where we're at. So I know there's a county shoot up there, a trap shoot in the middle of October, how long is that date?
It's, um, I think the second Sunday in October.
October, so hope, hoping to get done before that point, of course.
Yeah, I'm signed up, so if you could make that happen.
And the grand opening for Kellyman River Park?
Don't know. Don't have a date for that, for the new bathrooms, bathroom.
The week, the week after the season closes.
I have to have a ribbon cutting in the spring when it's nice out again.
Have you been contacted at all by the city of council regarding, uh, the kayak, uh, launch area?
No.
It's another Kellyman question. And, uh, we're, we're on the final stages of the five-year Parks Board Plan.
They are, yeah, uh.
So we should see that.
Early soon from, from Melissa, correct.
So I do have one thing. If you like construction, they should be setting, uh, beams this week on the Ostrander Road Project.
Oh, someone just asked me about that.
Yeah, they're setting beams, the, the schedule for this week to get the crane and the beams to be, uh, delivered. So they'll be setting those this week.
I, the person that spoke to me about that, I, 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 I think I've been out there to this, to the bridge. It would, it's been there a year and a half, maybe, I don't know. It's, the time for me gets lost.
This project started this summer, the Ostrander Triple Bypass. Or are you talking about Pleasant Hill?
Ah, Pleasant Hills.
Pleasant Hill, uh, we were out there a few weeks ago, did some borings. Um, we have our preliminary boring log and they'll use those to develop the foundation. So that is under design right now. Um, it is on the six-year plan for, I believe, next year. So we'll be here in a few weeks going through, uh, the six-year plan.
That's the redundant fish bridge?
Yes.
We haven't had any accidents to, on that?
Not recently. When we first went out there, we had, were we up to six, eight?
Yeah.
We had. Yeah, we had quite a few people, um, for some reason, when it narrowed down, they kept hitting the bridge buttment. Um, so we have put more bigger stop signs. We, I think we ended up putting buttons, uh, warning people before they hit the stop bar, slow down, come to a stop, so.
Going northbound too.
Yeah, I stood by there one day for probably close to two hours. And, uh, yeah, it's stop signs at each end. What stop sign? And they were barreling through and you have a speed limit on there too, but it was
Yeah.
Barreling through.
It's, it's the challenger and you have straightaways everywhere. Sparks Drive is another notorious speed.
Well, you gotta beat the other guy to the.
Well, that depends if you're under thirty-five, I think.
So there were that number of accidents, okay. I wondered.
Yeah, there were a lot really quickly. Um, they, they just seemed to be hitting, I haven't heard of any lately. Um, but they, they were keeping me informed. We had quite a few.
A lot of them were impaired.
I think Nevada Drive is another one of those straightaways, except it goes downhill, so.
Yes, and that one is a twenty-five mile per hour road. And so it's a, it's problematic.
Theoretically.
That is what it is posted.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. It's always amazing there aren't more accidents than some of these straightaways that Eagle do. Industrial Way is another notorious spot too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think we'll close the meeting. Uh, seem reasonable to you, Mr. Weber?
Think we're done.
So, uh, thank you, everybody. This meeting is now adjourned.